I'm going to call the meeting of the Gloucester City Council for Tuesday, September 10th, to order. And as a reminder, this meeting is recorded. I have video and audio in accordance with the state open meeting law. And we will start with our flag salute in a moment of silence. So, Counselor O'Hara, do you want to do the flag salute? Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the moment of silence is going to be led by our colleague Dana Jorgensen. So Dana, go ahead.
As a 9/11 veteran, I asked with permission of the council president that the moment of silence on the eve of 9/11 be dedicated to the 2,997 who lost their lives 18 years ago, and the tri-state emergency personnel, some professionals, many from volunteer fire and EMS departments, who went into New York City as so many were fleeing to face the unknown and selfishly leaving their families and communities in a time of great uncertainty. Some of them succumbed that day, some of them succumbed from that day years later. We will never forget their sacrifices.
Madam Clerk, first order of business?
First order of business is oral communications.
The public shall have the opportunity at every regularly scheduled meeting to be heard under oral communications on matters not appearing on the agenda. Oral communications shall allow any resident who has a request or complaint of any nature relative to city business to appear before the council, state their problem without debate, and the matter shall be referred to the proper agency through the office of the mayor. The resident will be notified within a two-week period relative to the disposition of same, and a copy shall be forwarded to the city council. Persons speaking under oral communication shall be limited to three minutes each. Council president shall not allow complaints as to individual performance. Do I have anybody interested in oral communication tonight? Yes, sir. Step up to the podium and speak right into the microphone like that and name and address, please.
My name is Craig Hamilton. I reside at 46th Grove Street. And my complaint is the overflowing sewer manholes at 31 and 34 Grove Street that have been constantly going on for the past at least a couple of years that I know of. The city's been there many, many times. They know that there's a problem there, let alone they keep overflowing. One's at 31 is at a bus stop. They come down, they basically pump out the manhole and sanitize and then go on their way. But it's just nobody's ever addressing the issue of repairing whatever the problems are. It's been scoped, so I know there's a problem there on both of them. The other ones I have is the sidewalks, debilitated sidewalks all over Grove Street, as well as the roadway itself. The sidewalks are complete hazard, just patches. I've had Jamie actually take care of, I had a gas manhole shut off to my house that was an infill that was open for almost two years with a cone over it. It's been taken care of now, but there's just so many issues along the whole sidewalk. And I'm being told now that there's no finances to replace the sidewalks on Grove Street. And it just seems like everything on Grove Street gets done, never. So it's just, that's my complaint.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else for oral communication? Yes, please. Step up to the mic, name and address for the record, please. Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak at oral comments this evening. My name is Mary Lou Tierney, and I reside at 5 Hesper Circle in Magnolia. My complaint is the lack of following of processes, protocols, too much politics and conflict of interest on the zoning board of appeals. My second complaint is the decision-making process of these types of appeals that overburden real estate taxes as opposed to other ways to pursue revenue and support of the city government. I used to think of Gloucester as a lovely lady I would have the privilege of growing old with. I'm not sure anymore. Based on my recent experiences with the zoning board of appeals, one or both of us will be gone. She will be lost. She will have lost her beauty and luster, and I will have left because of it. Just as our oceans and the fishing livelihood have been destroyed by man's greed and the lack of government officials and politicians to think long-term, sustainably, and thoroughly about unintended consequences that will emerge 10 to 20 years down the road, the city of Gloucester is at a crucial tipping point, right now, of either protecting or destroying the tourism economy it so desperately wants and needs to replace what has been lost to the demise of the fishing industry. Do you know what happens to a woman when she is violated and raped? She loses her heart and her soul, and she can often be found moaning and wailing from the agonizing grief and loss that has been ripped from her identity when her violations are done using her for their own pleasure with no forethought to the aftermath nor concern for what they leave behind. They'll be long gone. This is what the Gloucester zoning, health, and planning boards are doing to our city's land and the historic neighborhoods that hug our fragile coastline. Gloucester's elected city government has put these people on these boards, whether it's been done to make your own pet projects get done, or where you can take care of the people you know rather than listen to voters and constituents. Time's up for this to stop, and I hope you say yes for me, too. Here are some facts relating specifically to the zoning board of appeals. Based from analysis of data on the website of decisions made in 2019, 92% of appeals presented to the zoning board of appeals have been granted. Over 70% of them have been granted at the first presentation. Public opposition is flatly ignored. Regarding the 35 Fuller Street, at a June 27th meeting, there was an overwhelming majority of 27, opposed 9-4. The ZBA did not make a decision. It was continued. It was continued to August 8th. There was another majority of, according to the meeting minutes, 25 to 30 people. I'm not sure why an accurate count wasn't taken at that night. 25 to 30 against, 17-4, flatly denied. Just short of corrupt, the zoning board demonstrates conflict of interest and cover-up. One member of the zoning board of appeals is a major property owner in Magnolia and that the June 27th meeting should have recused himself from commentary and influence. Instead, he spoke about his property ownership, made influence to the group, and the continuance was made to August 8th. I request to the board that these processes be looked at for conflict of interest. I think it's timely that today, the Boston zoning board of appeals was reported for bribery. Zoning boards are no longer a place where people with other than their own best interests, other than residents, can hide.
So, excuse me, but you've-
I thought this was out of debate.
Way over your three minutes. This is not a debate. You've gone over your three minutes, so finish up. And by the way, we will not take comments that are complaints about individual performance, which you're-
Make an individual, sir.
Excuse me, you're getting very close to that, where you're accusing members of the zoning board about stuff. So finish your comment, and thank you for speaking.
And I did, I specifically did not point out anyone specifically. I am speaking generally about the zoning board of appeals. I did look at other videos of these meetings, and I specifically stayed away from making any personal opinions.
So finish up, please.
So, complex problems require strategic, innovative, mind-expanding ideas. Please stop narrow thinking that burdens the backs of property owners and overdevelops Gloucester's land in the single pursuit of property taxes in ways to manage the budget. There are other creative ways, sustainable ways, to bring about recurring, expanding revenue to manage budgets. Please stop burdening the backs of property owners in this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for oral communication? Okay, Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is city council citation to former council president Paul McGary and Catherine McGary.
So if Catherine and Paul could join Counselor Cox and I at the podium? So we should kind of face this way. So we would like to honor Paul and Catherine tonight. Counselor Cox and I served with Counselor McGary on the city council, and he was council president while we were both on there. So we will read the citation, and I'll let you start, or read the whole thing, Counselor Cox.
I'll split it with you.
Okay.
Whereas Catherine and Paul McGary have been important participants in Gloucester city life for many years and are now embarking on a new life with their family in California. Whereas Paul McGary served the Gloucester City Council as counselor from Ward 1 for six years and as city council president during the 2014-2015 term, and has continued to serve the city as a member of the Clean Energy Commission.
And whereas Catherine McGary has worked tirelessly for the good of the community and especially its young people through her work with the Gloucester Prevention Network and Support of the Arts, and whereas together Catherine and Paul McGary have lent their time, talents, and treasure to making Gloucester a community that embraces and supports all of our citizens, now therefore the Gloucester City Council, on behalf of the citizens of Gloucester, extends its deep gratitude to Catherine and Paul McGary for their service to the city of Gloucester and wish them well in their new life. Thank you. So, as you know, our business here in the Cairo's Auditorium is talk, so go ahead and talk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, counselors. And I want to recognize my fellow members of the Clean Energy Commission and the city administrative staff who are here as well. I worked with them for a long time, as you know, and I have nothing but good things to say about them. You know, I came here almost exactly 45 years ago, never having been to Gloucester before. I, like most people, stopped at the man-at-the-wheel and had my picture taken, but unlike most people who then move on to the next stop on the bus tour, I stayed. I grew to love this place. There's something about this rugged and resilient city and its rugged and resilient people that drew me and that drew all of us here and kept us here for these last 45 years. Though I made my living elsewhere, I made my life, we made our life, here. And though every winter, even at 2:00 in the morning coming back from Dorchester, I would come back to Gloucester because it was here that I made my home and we raised our family together. So we are now going to a different place, a very different place, on the other side of the country, and the pull of the grandchildren takes us there. But when they ask us in Fresno when we're coming back to Gloucester, where are we going? We'll say, "We are going home." So I want to thank you for this, and I know Catherine does, too. And I want to leave you with just two thoughts. The first is one that everybody who stands at this podium points to, the mural that says, "Build not for today alone, but for tomorrow as well." We've heard it almost every meeting, but it means so much. It meant so much to me when I sat where you are, to think about the future, about our children and grandchildren. Gloucester is a wonderful place, but it cannot be preserved in amber. It must grow and change and embrace its future, whatever that future is to be. And the second thought I would leave with you, which also informed me when I sat where you sit, was what Mark Twain once said. He said that if you were given a choice between two courses of action, always do the right thing. This, he said, would gratify some people and astonish the rest. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Paul and Catherine. And we will miss you. Yes?
Three-minute recess?
Pardon me? Sure. Yeah, we're going to take a picture, so we're going to take a three-minute recess, and let's do it right in front here. Thank you. So we do a lot of stuff here at city council, a lot of different stuff, but doing something like that is one of the favorite things we like to do. So, thank you, Paul and Catherine, and we'll see you very soon. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is the consent agenda.
Any counselors wish to pull anything from the consent agenda? Counselor Memhard?
Under communications and invitations, I'd like to pull number one.
Okay. Number one, anybody else? I'll have a motion to approve the rest of the consent agenda?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Counselor Memhard, council vote, communications and invitations, number one?
Yes, I just wanted to highlight for the council, this motion to make permanent the dog ordinances and the beach regulations that were approved last year, because it had a sunset clause, we'll just be coming back to the council for a council vote at the next December 20, September 24th meeting. And the recommendation from the Animal Advisory Committee is to have it reinstated in the same form that it is now, and in the absence of any concerns or conflict to the contrary, that's what we'll be doing. So I just wanted to bring that to people's attention. Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll have a motion to accept that?
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. I think that will go. Next order of business, Madam Clerk.
Next order of business is the Budget and Finance Standing Committee Report of September 5th.
Counselor Cox?
Thank you. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve payment of prior year invoices from Comac Brothers Incorporated serviced city facility sprinkler systems for the purpose of paying the following invoices for June 2019 to be paid with fiscal 20 funds, as detailed for the amount of $4,187.86. And I so move?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any comment?
Unfortunately, the invoices came in in June. There was no PO in place, and they needed to be paid with fiscal 20 funds.
Thank you.
You'll see this ongoing from this.
Okay.
So it's basically, it's just a timing issue. So unfortunately, the, I feel that the DPW and the police department are inherently busier than any other department during that time of year, so that is why we normally see more from them from that time period. So I will give them some allotted leniency.
Okay. Okay, voice vote. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Next one?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve payment of a prior year invoice from Mechanical Air Controls, provided, they provided city facility protective maintenance program, second half for the purpose of paying an invoice dated June 28th, 2019, to be paid with fiscal 2020 funds totaling $8,774.07. And I so move?
And seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Thank you. Next.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A and a half, a gift of tangible goods to the city of Gloucester from the Friends of the Avis Murray related to the restoration of the Avis R. Murray Boulevard tennis courts in the amount of $89,734.03. And I so move?
And I'll serve that. Let me second that.
Moved and served. Do you want to tell us what that is? I think we know.
So this is an outstanding example of success, public-private partnership between the Friends of Avis Murray and the Public Works Department to completely renovate the Avis Murray tennis courts on Stacy Boulevard. The budget was $120,000 to redo the courts, and the Friends raised $122,014.24. And only expending $119,734.03, of those funds raised, $30,000 came from CPA funds, and $89,734.03 was from private donations, leaving a balance of $2,280.21, which the Friends are donating to start an Avis Murray tennis court maintenance fund, which we all know maintenance is super important when we redo things. I want to extend my thanks to J.J. Bell and the 12 other members of the Friends of Avis Murray, and for all those members of the public who donated funds to bring this project to completion.
Okay. Counselor Gillman?
I hate to say this, but I'm going to recuse myself because I was on that fundraising committee, so I'm going to go out in the audience and listen to you take the vote. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Counselor Cox is correct. This is a great example of public-private partnership, and as many of us like to say, a tennis court free and open to the public on the ocean's edge is pretty rare.
Yes.
It's a nice thing for Gloucester to have, so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now, did that get both of the motions?
Nope, I have another one.
Okay, do the other one.
Yeah. I just covered the detail in the commentary. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council accept under Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, a cash donation of $2,280.21 from the Friends of Avis Murray to be held in a donation fund for the purpose of maintaining the Avis R. Murray tennis courts on Stacy Boulevard, and I so move?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Great, thank you. Next.
Welcome back, Val. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the city council approve payment of a prior year invoice dated July 2nd, 2019 for water deliveries from Ready Fresh to pay an outstanding balance of $26.95, with fiscal 20 general fund, Community Development Department budgeted funds, and I so move?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the city council approve payment of a prior year invoice for claims processed by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development, Department of Unemployment Assistance for May 2018 activity totaling $6,512, and for June 2018, activity totaling $4,299, for a total of $10,811, to be paid with fiscal 20 funds, and I so move?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And-
That is it until the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cox. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is the Planning and Development Standing Committee Report of September 4th.
O and A first? Oh.
There was no meeting for O and A, it was a holiday.
Yeah, why don't you do that, since there's, in the script, here it is. Okay, Val? Why don't you do the B and D first, which there is-
There are no matters from this meeting for council consideration.
All right. Now Counselor LeBlanc.
Just a PSA. The straw ban ordinance that was continued to today's date will now be heard Tuesday, September 24th, through a new public hearing as the content of the subsection to be added changed the ordinance enough to warrant a re-advertising and take this matter up under a new public hearing.
Great. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is public hearing 2019-040, amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 11, Section 11-10F, special events transient vendors' parades by adding the following sentence. Further, the Special Events Advisory Committee and/or Licensing Commission shall refer all special events parade requests that involve the use of Stacy Boulevard or State Fort Park to the city council for final approval.
I'll open the public hearing and continue this till September 24th? Yes. Counselor Cox?
May I ask as to why we're continuing that one?
Yes, I was just about to say that. So this is similar to another proposed amendment-
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Great. Thank you. Next.
Welcome back, Val. Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve payment of a prior year invoice dated July 2, 2019 for water deliveries from Ready Fresh to pay an outstanding balance of $26.95 with fiscal 20 general fund, Community Development Department budgeted funds, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Next.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend that the City Council approve payment of a prior year invoice for claims processed by the Massachusetts Executive Office of Labor and Workforce Development, Department of Unemployment Assistance for May 2018 activity totaling $6,512 and for June 2018 active, activity totaling $4,299 for a total of $10,811 to be paid with fiscal 20 funds. And I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you.
That is it until the public hearing.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cox. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is the Planning and Development Standing Committee Report of September 4.
O and A first? Oh.
There was no meeting for O and A.
Okay.
It was a holiday.
Yeah, why don't you do that since there's, in the script, here it is. Okay. Val? Why don't you do the B and D first, which there is?
There are no matters from this meeting for council consideration.
All right. Now, Counselor LeBlanc.
Just a PSA. The straw ban ordinance that was continued to today's date will now be heard Tuesday, September 24 through a new public hearing as the content of the subsection to be added changed the ordinance enough to warrant a re-advertising and take this matter up under a new public hearing.
Great. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is Public Hearing 2019-040, amend Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 11, Section 11-10F, Special Events Transient Vendors Parades by adding the following sentence. Further, the Special Events Advisory Committee and/or Licensing Commission shall refer all special events parade requests that involve the use of Stacy Boulevard or State Fort Park to the City Council for final approval.
I'll open the public hearing and continue this till September 24. Yes. Counselor Cox.
May I ask as to why we're continuing that?
Yes, I was just about to say that. So this is similar to another proposed amendment to the ordinance, the special events ordinance that comes later today, which we will have a public hearing on and we will vote on. And if that vote is, you know, if we're all satisfied with that vote, then this will be withdrawn. Okay?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
Next order of business is Public Hearing 2019-048, Loan Order 2019-011, Loan Authorization Request for the Permanent Repairs and Paving of Seville Road in the Amount of $55,000.
So I'll open the public hearing and ask of those who wish to speak in favor. Mr. Dunn, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Counselors. This is a loan order in the amount of $55,000, relatively modest amount, for betterment to the private way Seville Road. The Clerk's office had certified to the Mayor in mid-July that the requirements of the ordinance had been fulfilled and we're coming forward now with the loan order and ask your approval so that we can move forward on those private way betterments.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Any communications, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Any Counselor questions as to what we're doing, the technicality here? And then I will close the public hearing. Call for the committee report. Counselor Cox.
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council pursuant to GCO, Chapter 21, Streets, Sidewalks and Other Places, Section 84, Permanent Construction or Repair, Subsection J, make the determination that the construction or repair of Seville Road is required by public necessity and that an authorizing, authorization of funding for the project shall move forward, and I so move.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any commentary? Okay. This is a simple majority? This is a roll call? I'm sorry. So this is a roll call vote? Yes, it's a loan order. Sorry. Madam Clerk?
Counselor Heck?
Yes.
Counselor Holgrom?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Counselor Lombard?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
City Council motion for the loan order in the amount of $55,000 passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed.
Thank you. And?
Next motion?
Next motion?
Budget and Finance voted unanimously to recommend the City Council approve the following loan authorization of $55,000 as follows. Order that the City of Gloucester appropriates $55,000 to pay costs of permanent repairs, including paving to the Seville Road private way, including costs incidental or related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Mayor, is authorized to borrow said amount under, and pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 7.5, or pursuant to any other enabling authority. Although any borrowing by the City to meet this appropriation shall constitute a general obligation of the City and a pledge of its full faith and credit, 100% of the amount needed to repay any borrowing pursuant to this order shall be raised in the first instance through the assessment of betterment upon the abutters of the private way in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 80, and any other acceptable authority. The Mayor and any other appropriate official of the City are authorized to take any and all actions necessary to access the betterments described above, the term of which will not exceed 10 years or such shorter time as prescribed by Mass. General Law. Any premium received by the City upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied to the payment of costs of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Laws, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by like of amount. Further order that the Treasurer is authorized to file an application with the Municipal Finance Oversight Board to qualify under Chapter 44A of the General Laws any or all of the bonds authorized by this order and to provide such information and execute such documents as the Municipal Finance Oversight Board may require for these purposes, and I so move.
And I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. No commentary?
I mean, it's, it's been covered, what the CFO stated earlier.
So this is a roll call?
Correct.
Roll call vote, please.
Counselor Heck?
Yes.
Counselor Holgrom?
Yes.
Counselor LeBlanc?
Yes.
Counselor Lombard?
Yes.
Counselor Memhard?
Yes.
Counselor Nolan?
Yes.
Counselor O'Hara?
Yes.
Counselor Cox?
Yes.
And Counselor Gilman?
Yes.
City Council vote passes on a vote of nine in favor, zero opposed, for $55,000 loan authorization.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business is Public Hearing 2019-049, the application of NSDJ Real Estate LLC to amend a license granted June 12, 2018, for the storage of ammonia, gas and oil at 159 East Main Street, MAP 63, Lot 26, pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter 148, Section 13, and Gloucester Code of Ordinances, Chapter 8, Section 8 dash white, dash 8.1, I'm sorry, license for storing flammables.
I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone to speak in favor of this application. Name and address for the record, please.
Nick Osgood, President of Atlantic Fish and Seafood and managing partner of NSDJ Real Estate. Home address, 5 Partridge Berry Lane, Hamilton, Mass. Property address, 159 East Main Street, Gloucester. Thank you for hearing our request to amend our license. It was an oversight that, that the amount of ammonia that was originally listed in our application in 2018 was understated. And when I acquired the company in May of 2019, we determined that the amount of ammonia was actually in two different systems. And you can see by my application, we increased the amount to reflect two separate systems for a total, I believe, of just over 10,000, 10,000 pounds. So we'd request that our application be approved for the modification here, our amendment. And, you know, this, this facility hasn't made any changes, so this, this amount has been the amount that's been, you know, in the facility for, you know, since inception of 1968. So it's been there for a long time. But hope to hear any questions and any discussion points?
We may have questions, but that's good for right now. Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor of this application? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Hello, Mike, may name and address for the record, please?
My name is Michael Thayde. I own property under the name of Reed's Wharf Marina, Inc., which is on Pirate's Lane. My property is directly abutting this property. I'm not opposed to them getting licensed. What I am opposed to is that my understanding is, and I did file a request for documents, but you're, the city is within its time limit still, but on, in the file, in your file, on August 16, the Fire Chief sent a letter to Mr. Osgood and suggested that we set up a date to meet and tour and inspect your facility. The Gloucester Fire Department currently does not have a Tier 2 report, evacuation map, emergency action plan, or an NH3 ammonia emergency response action plan from NSDJ Real Estate. Now, they've owned the property since late 2018. The takeover that he was talking about, about May, is only of one of the tenants' facilities. Now, it says here, NDJ, DJ Real Estate must submit these updated plans under the new ownership to my office ASAP. I expect this to happen sooner, but given the circumstances, it needs to happen immediately. The Tier 2 report should not only reflect the current ownership, but the actual quantities of material on site regardless of what the current licensing documentation list. Now, as of the subcommittee hearing or the standing committee hearing, that document, those documents have not been provided. Whether they've been provided from last week to now, I don't know. I don't think so. I've had a conversation with the Chief and quite frankly, I think you should hold up this license until these things are all submitted. Ammonia is not an inert gas. It can be dangerous. They have had some leaks, as the Chief admitted. They've also had some alarms going off down there to which there were responses made. Now, my point is, this is a safety issue. And if you just say, well, we'll give them the permit, and it wasn't clear, quite frankly, from the subcommittee meeting whether the stipulation that the Chief was looking for was a stipulation that they must submit this first, or was a stipulation that they submit this after the license is issued. I would respectfully request that you do not issue the license and make a condition that until all of these reports are on file with the Fire Department, that no permit issued. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Are there any communications, Madam Clerk?
There are none.
Any Counselor questions? Counselor Gilman, start with you.
Yeah, I'd like to ask our Fire Chief to come up and answer a question. Thank you, Chief Smith. My question is regarding the need to have that information current before the amended permit is granted.
Yeah, the, the licensing question is, you know, off slightly. It's not a substantial difference between what is there currently and what has been there in the past. You know, the, the plans, as a matter of fact, this was submitted yesterday, today? May have been yesterday, from Atlantic Fish and Seafood for the ammonia emergency response plan. You know, there's been an ongoing conversation with them to get their plans switched over from the AmeriCold label and the National Fish and Seafood label to their company. So everything officially that we have of record is reflective of the current ownership and operation. So this is really more of a paperwork kind of housekeeping issue than, than an operational thing because these plans aren't really going to change much. The only thing that really changes is the structure of who is their emergency response, folks? Who is their emergency contacts? And obviously, having their name on the paperwork and endorsing that, hey, this is our plan, that they own it and they take responsibility for it. So that's, to us, that's important from a couple of different standpoints. You know, one of them would be cost recovery, that we have, you know, worked with this company and their operation to demonstrate that there has been that site-specific training that's required under the law. In addition, that, you know, they've taken ownership of the operation fully to include those plans because if there is a release, that's, that's a cost recovery situation under federal law and those bills end up going back to them. So just to cross the Ts and dot the Is on my side of this and, you know, on behalf of the Department of Fire Service, who's going to send a hazmat response if it was to rise to that level, we need to have all those documents in place. So it's important to us. We have all of it currently and we have, you know, the beginnings of it being updated. So the most important plan out of the, out of the bunch has been updated. We wait for the Tier 2 report. That may take a little bit of time because that is something that gets processed through software to the state and they should have the ability to export it on a PDF so they can get it directly to us. But sometimes that software doesn't, doesn't behave well and gives a lot of people that operate it a little bit of trouble. So I don't expect it to take too long. I would say, you know, a window of opportunity for them to get it done would be reasonable, 45, 90 days, whatever the Council feels is adequate that you want to work out with Mr. Osgood. Certainly, we expect it all to get caught up in short order, though.
Go ahead, Counselor.
So the Tier 2 report information that we're waiting for now ends up being the updated evacuation map and updated emergency action plan?
So currently, I have their updated ammonia emergency action response plan and the evacuation map. Again, the, the facility hasn't changed, so those things haven't changed. The map is, you know, nearly identical, but it has their name on it.
So the one thing that hasn't been updated now is an up, on the Tier 2 report requirements are, is the updated emergency action plan? That's what we're waiting for?
Correct. So there are two separate pieces. One's a Tier 2 report that comes through state channels. And then the other one is emergency action plan, which under OSHA rules are required for every facility in town, including our own, which now that we fall under OSHA, we're in the process of developing. So that one is an absolute must for the city to have, but the ammonia response plan as well as the Tier 2 are absolutes. And I have at least one, plus the evacuation map, and we're waiting really on the Tier 2 report.
So do you think 30 days is reasonable to require those remaining documents?
I don't think it's unreasonable, but I would, I would have to refer that back to Mr. Osgood. I've never dealt with the software that they have to input this, nor the process that it goes through to get to the state and for them to be able to actually export the PDF with all the data with their name on it. So I can't really speak to what it takes to get it done.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Counselor Memhard? And then Counselor Cox?
Chief, while you're still here, could you give us a brief update about the calls that your department has received in the last year or so from the facility in terms of concerns about emissions or leaks?
Yeah, over the last year, it's been pretty much the standard types of minor leaks and notifications that we get. They have pretty sensitive equipment for, you know, detecting leaks. I believe their, their levels are set at 25 parts per million as well as 35 parts per million. They get an internal alarm at 25 and an external, if you will, notification. It comes direct to the Fire Department once they hit 35 parts per million. So that gives them an opportunity. I mean, anything less than 25 parts per million, at 3 parts per million, you're going to smell it. And it's pretty pungent. Anybody that's worked in the industry, as you have, knows what it's like. So to hit those numbers, it's not going unnoticed by the employees. They're typically doing what they need to do to, to manage it, evacuate. If it hits those alarms, it's alerting the entire building. And then if it gets beyond to that 35 level, we're notified. So we've had very few of those notifications, if any. I believe the notices, and I haven't reviewed all the reports. My officers typically bring it immediately to my attention if it's of anything that rises to a level that gives them concern. And obviously, alarms and significant leaks have to be, be reported federally and we haven't had that occur. They've been more nuisance alarms or very minor leaks that they, you know, they do the right thing and they notify us, hey, we had a minor leak and we're handling it. So that's, that's part of what they're responsible to do and they, and they've done that.
I believe that one of the items on, on the MEMA Tier 2 filing also addresses how the chemicals are delivered into Gloucester and into the plant. So if they're getting a tanker load of ammonia gas from Tanner Industries or someone, you know, what, what their delivery route is, where, what the source of the material is, and then if, if there was an accident, how it would impact the city. So that is an important element of the MEMA Tier 2 compliance, which is filed with your department and with the state.
It does. And with, with those types of chemicals that are not expended, if you will, that they're, you know, much like antifreeze in your vehicle, they're not expending that. They're not using it in a manner in which it comes and goes with any regularity. So deliveries in town of ammonia are, are not very often. When they have to do maintenance, typically, they, they're going to offload what they have to out of the piping into a vessel on site and then they're going to put it right back into the system. So there isn't a lot of transportation of ammonia through town.
Could you just speak to what the difference is or what it means materially that they've pushed past this threshold of 10,000 pounds? Whether it's a compliance matter or whether there's some other practical issues in terms of reporting?
Yeah, so the, so the, the city licensing is different than the Tier 2 report. The Tier 2 report is actually accurate. So there's been no difference in that. They cite some, I believe it's about 11,000 pounds on the Tier 2 report because Tier 2 requires you not only to report what you have in a vessel or a tank, that, that is your technical storage amounts, but also what's in the plumbing, what's in the compressors, what's in the, in, in the equipment itself. Whereas the storage of flammables licensing is just licensing a known quantity in a storage vessel. So there's, there's a difference between the two. And, and as I stated, the Tier 2 report is accurate. I don't expect that it will change other, again, the I don't expect that it will change other, again, than the name on the paper. So we have an official report that, yes, this is what we own and what we're reporting all the way up through the chain.
Other questions? Counselor Cox.
Do you see any reason why we couldn't continue this to October 8th, giving them 30 days, or even October 22nd, to give them a little bit more time to get what they need to get and be in compliance?
Yeah, I personally don't object to it. They're obviously gonna continue to operate and do what they do, and we're gonna respond as needed. You know, if there is some holdup to the business operation that this license would impose, then I would leave that to the counsel and those, you know, asking for the change in the license to iron out. But I'm not opposed to it. If that works for the counsel, better than just giving a certain day number to have it finished, because then you'd have to reverse the process, which may be more difficult than it's worth.
Is there anything that you don't have that runs even the slightest bit of possible harm to your crew, your staff?
That we need for, in regards to the operation of this facility?
Correct.
No, in general, it's part of what the industry has out there and that we respond to. I mean, it is what it is. We've got numerous plants in town. Am I a fan of that hazard being, you know, right in the downtown area? No, but that's where it exists, and that's where it's existed for a long time. It's not optimal, but it's a marine industrial use, and it is being operated the way it should be.
If this is a required step for them to have, but you not having it doesn't really affect your guys? Is that...
No, it doesn't. I mean, we have the previous owner's paperwork on file. So it covers the period of 2018, and it's the repairable quantities that they had, part of the right to know, Sarah Title II legislation that's out there that they have to follow. So, I mean, it's still a Tier Two site. We know what they have. They know, we know how it operates. Our crews have been in the plant annually, at least, if not twice a year touring, and going through those programs and such with their people. So there isn't really a big change for us, because, like I said, this is more of a paperwork exercise to make sure that we have the official documentation in their name on our files in case something does happen.
Okay. I'm of the opinion that official paperwork needs to be officially done, and I don't feel like I'm satisfied at this point with where we're at with the paperwork. So I would ask to have this continued.
So when we get to close the public hearing, you have the committee report. Do we have some discussion about contingencies and so forth, and we'll talk about it then?
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, good point. Counselor LeBlanc?
Thank you, Chief. I want to ask the applicant a question.
Sure.
So if this is continued, how will that affect your operation?
If we're able to operate, that's fine, but if we're not able to operate, we would put 150 people out of work immediately.
Okay. So 30 days is...
Yeah, this is a very high priority for us. So I would imagine we could get it done even sooner than that, but that's, 30 days would be enough time to execute. It's a paperwork adjustment, as conveyed by the chief.
Okay. Just a point of reference, that we permit other things with conditions. So I don't see permitting this with the condition wouldn't be possible. So that's just my point of view.
Other council questions? Counselor Nolan, you haven't spoken yet. Go ahead.
I got a question for the chief. So it's basically, from what I'm understanding, what we have or what we actually need for this to be legal, you are in possession of. So some of the Tier Two stuff is something that's not part of our requirement for the City of Gloucester for the licensing for this? Or is that an actual part of the requirement that gets filed as well?
Yeah, as far as the licensing is concerned, that goes through the clerk's office. I don't see that this is a necessary component of that, but in the larger scheme of the compliance of the facility and the fire department's sign-off on this, then it is.
Thank you.
Counselor O'Hara, and then Counselor Memhard.
Sure. This is for the chief. Thank you for being here tonight. Just straight up, you've been to the plan?
Yep.
Do you think the plan is safe?
Yeah, I believe that they're operating as it was previously. I don't see any significant maintenance issues that they haven't addressed, and when they have had issues, they've addressed them. They've made proper notifications when there's been a requirement to provide, you know, reporting to the federal level of what they're going to do to remediate. They've provided it in the past, and I haven't seen any changes in what they intend to do with the new company. Unfortunately, there hasn't been anything of significance that's risen to that level to force them to do that. So I expect, you know, they still have some of the same players that are working in their maintenance and engineering end of things, running the plant. So I would assume that business will continue as it has in the past.
Sure. Thank you. Continue. It said very densely, dense neighborhood residential. Is there, in the unfortunate event situation occurred, as far as evacuating the neighborhood, is there anything that possibly educating the neighbors on, but I'm sure there's a lot of transient people, apartments in the neighborhood, people don't even know that other than that building exists, a lot of people probably don't even know what's in the building? As far as educating them, should an event happen? Is that a normal protocol, or would that be something that...
Yeah, that's something typically that we looked, unfortunately, back at Nick and his crew to make sure that they're putting that information out, links to, you know, what you can do to prepare. I mean, we do the same thing on the emergency management side, but that's really an outreach thing, that the person who owns said chemical kind of has a responsibility to try to do what is the right thing with the neighbors and inform and keep them informed. That's part of what we do, but not solely resting upon our shoulders.
Okay. Could I ask, follow with Nick? It's okay, I'm allowed to talk. I don't talk very much.
Go ahead. Go ahead, Jamie.
Is that what the chief just mentioned? Is that anything that you would be willing to offer to the neighbors, obviously, to try to just educate them what's going on in an event of an issue?
Sure. Yeah, we would be happy to do that. Our engineer, Silvio Albano, handles much of this. Unfortunately, he couldn't be here tonight, but we could certainly have the neighbors over and talk to them about it and, you know, hopefully make them feel better about this facility being in the neighborhood.
Terrific. Thank you, Nick.
Counselor Memhard, then Counselor, oh, we have all counselors wanting to go ahead.
Just following up, Nick. You know, congratulations are in order. I don't know if you welcome them or not. You've had a long, challenging road here, and you've ended up putting down more roots in Gloucester than I think you anticipated, but congratulations on all that.
Thank you.
My sense is that you've brought two operations under one roof, because AmeriCold freezers operated separately from National Fish and Seafood. They had two different crews.
That's correct.
Two different crews, two different engine rooms. Is a lot of what you're doing now under your one control in terms of in-house maintenance or outside contractors that are being brought in to help you maintain the overall industrial plant?
Yeah, we contract with American Refrigeration, who's really the top in the industry, to assist us in the plant on maintenance repairs, as well as, you know, recurring maintenance, which is they're contracted with us. So it's a very strong relationship with those folks. So anytime something comes up, they're in it. We know how to handle it correctly, and, you know, we've got a lot of the same staff who've been working this plant for 30 years. They're there today, working with us. So it feels good. We're comfortable.
Good. Thank you.
So Counselor Hackett, you haven't spoken yet. Go ahead.
Thank you. Nick, two things. Might this, if you're not licensed tonight, would this have any impact on your loan documents in terms of default, not being licensed and operating?
Not to my recollection at this point.
Second question is, do you think that this would have any impact on your insurance policy, in terms of if there's a catastrophic event and you not being licensed in this area? Would that have an impact on your insurance?
That would have an impact. I mean, the facility risk is what the risk is. The insurance companies know, you know, an operating facility is less risk than a vacant facility. So, you know, we don't want to shut it down. We want to keep it going. We want to keep the jobs going. So, yeah, it would most likely impact our insurance.
Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Gilman, then Counselor Cox.
So I have an easy question for you, Nick. So the updated evacuation map, Chief Smith said that that's the same. How difficult would it be for you to put your new name on that and make sure that that's on file with the police chief immediately?
We did that. That is, that's been done. So since last week, we actually had a...
So the evacuation map is under your new name?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Cox.
How long have you known that you had to get these documents in?
Say that again?
How long have you known that you needed to get these documents in?
Upon acquisition and evaluating the, going through the due diligence and subsequently closing on the property, we realized there was a discrepancy in the ammonia license that we had with the City of Gloucester.
Not just the discrepancy, but the action plans, the safety aspects that we don't have in hand yet?
I don't have the, earlier this evening, the chief had mentioned a document that was sent to me or to the company. I don't have that handy. I don't have that in my reference files. But again, that may have gone to Silvio at National Fish, because Silvio was the contact handling these items, you know, for National Fish at the time.
Okay. Chief Smith, do you know how long you've been waiting for these documents?
I would say, I think it was mid to late August when I sent the email requesting them to update that.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Anybody else? Then we will close the public hearing and ask for the committee report.
Thank you. Planning and Development Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council grant amendment to a license previously granted on June 12, 2018, under GCO Chapter Eight, Fire Prevention and Protection, Section Eight, Dash One, license for storing inflammables, MGL Chapter 148, Section 13, and 527 CMR Number One, for storage of inflammables at 159 East Main Street, Assessors Map 63, Lot 26. Owner NSDJ Real Estate LLC, specifically to store ammonia 9,730 pounds. Argon gas, 225 pounds and three cylinders. Oxygen gas, 50 pounds and two cylinders. Acetylene gas, 50 pounds and two cylinders. Cooking oils, 11,500 gallons, two 5,000 gallon tanks, and three 500 gallon tanks. By decreasing one ammonia storage from 9,730 pounds to 9,032 pounds, and adding 1,070 pounds of ammonia stored separately. Total quantity of ammonia stored on site is now 10,732 pounds. The modification of this license for storing inflammables is conditioned upon the receipt of an update of a Tier Two report, including an updated emergency action plan from NJSD Real Estate LLC to be on file with the Gloucester Fire Department. Further conditions that there are 30 days from September 11, 2019, to comply with the conditions, and I so move.
So, excuse me, Counselor, didn't you just read an amended version of what we approved?
I did.
Okay, so you need to read what we approved, and then you want to offer amendment?
I'm sorry. Duh.
So please...
I'm sorry. You're absolutely right, Counselor. Thank you. So let me...
It's just that last sentence, I think, that you amended.
Let me delete. So I will say, let me just say that I, there is some, yes. So I also took away some of the things that we voted as well, because the chief said that he has received some of these, so I would...
No, what you need to put in the record, please, is what the committee voted on, you know, whenever it was, a week ago.
Exact motion.
Then, the exact motion.
Right.
Then we can talk about amending it.
Okay.
So please do that.
All right. So, yes, I was amending on the spot. I'm sorry. So I'm gonna, Dana, for the record, may we go back to...
Read the whole thing over again.
Oh, no. Oh, my God. All right. No, I'll do it again. I'll read it quicker this time. The Planning and Development Committee voted three in favor, zero opposed, to recommend the city council grant amendment to a license previously granted on June 12, 2018, under GCO Chapter Eight, Fire Prevention and Protection, Section Eight, Dash One, license for storing inflammables, MGL Chapter 148, Section 13, and 527 CMR One, for storage of inflammables at 159 East Main Street, Assessors Map 63, Lot 26. Owner NSDJ Real Estate LLC, specifically to store ammonia 9,730 pounds. Argon gas, 225 pounds and three cylinders. Oxygen gas, 50 pounds and two cylinders. Acetylene gas, 50 pounds and two cylinders. Cooking oils, 11,500 gallons, two 5,000 gallon tanks, and three 500 gallon tanks. By decreasing one ammonia storage from 9,730 pounds to 9,032 pounds, and adding 1,070 pounds of ammonia stored separately. Total quantity of ammonia stored on site is now 10,732 pounds. The modification of this license for storing inflammables is contingent upon the receipt of an update of a Tier Two report, including an updated evacuation map and updated emergency action plan, or NH3 ammonia emergency response action plans from NJSD Real Estate LLC to be on file with the Gloucester Fire Department, and I so move.
Second.
There we go. Moved and seconded.
I'm sorry. That was my mistake.
No problem. So now, I know that there were lots of counselor concerns about contingencies or dates or whatever. So would you like to just comment on what you were saying there, and then we can have a discussion or have other suggestions?
So I was going to, first of all, amend the word contingent on the fourth, the last line, and make that conditioned upon the receipt. So I'd like to delete contingent and add conditioned.
So you're making an amendment?
I am making an amendment. Thank you. I thought I did. I'm sorry. Okay, I'm amending it to remove contingent and add conditioned. I would like to further amend it by, I've got all these scribbles, deleting an updated evacuation map and the NH3 ammonia emergency response action plan.
Point of order?
Yep.
Can we have a discussion on the main motion before we amend it?
Yes, let's have a discussion about the main motion. So the...
Well, go ahead, if you want to start. We're talking about contingency or effectiveness of the license.
All right. Well, we've heard from the chief and the applicant on some of the conditions that have been met here. You know, we have these public hearings, and people come up and they speak, and we make decisions on, you know, what we hear this evening. So some of these things have been met. We've heard from the applicant saying that, you know, at an insurance standpoint, this will affect him with a, you know, if something were to happen. He's got people at work trying to make a living, 150 people. You know, we have these applicants that we put in certain conditions, and I don't have a problem amending this. I don't want to get too complicated, Counsel Gilman. I think it just needs a simple condition of having these papers within the next 30 days or something like that. That would be something reasonable, rather than amending this whole thing and kind of chopping it up, because I don't see a problem with the way it's written. Because I don't see a problem with the way it's written.
Sure.
So that's just my opinion.
Counselor Cox.
I agree. I don't think the, I don't think the motion needs to be amended in the detail. We just need to say, we've received these, this is an update to the original motion. And I was under the impression that a lot of time has lapsed between the time that the discussion happened, where this needs to be here. So I'm, what I don't want to do is put our city clerk's office in a position where they're chasing documents, because it's coming up on the 30 days. It's now out of our hands, and it's completely in their office to chase these documents. If we continue the public hearing, if there was no harm, no foul to the business operations, to continue the public hearing and make people responsible to us instead of making our city staff jump through hoops, that's what I'm trying to avoid. And I think everybody agrees that we don't want to burden the city clerk's office with this, but we also agree that nobody wants to affect the business operations or put it in danger. And I appreciate Counselor Heck's commentary on the insurance certificates. So it's not something that I actively would have thought about. But as far as the amendments, we just say that we've accepted these documents, they have been turned in, and so I don't think that the motion needs to be amended in such detail.
Okay, Counselor Nolan.
I just have a question for Joanne. On what's in front of us, as far as what we're voting on, by our ordinances and by our standards, the applicant has met all requirements for the permit? So basically, by our law and rules, the applicant has met the requirements for this permit change?
They have, okay? Because when the application first came in, the fire department did sign off on it. And then after, when I informed Chief Smith that we had this application, and then also I called the fire prevention office, and they said, because he's increasing on one and increasing on the other, he had to go through the whole application again. That's when Chief Smith informed me of the documents he needed for the fire department. But according to our ordinance, whatever he has for an application and what the city council decides, he's in compliance with the ordinance. He informed the abudders, he, according to the ordinance, he paid for the legal advertisement, and we're having a public hearing. So it's up to the city council to decide whether to go forward. Now, Chief Smith did relay to me that he was going to speak to the applicant to have this paperwork all in. And he was going to sign off when the paperwork was turned in, when he informed me. So at that point, I was going to issue the amended license.
All right, thank you. So right now, the applicant has complied with our regulations for everything, and that satisfies me.
And Chapter 148 of the Mass General Law, yes.
So what is listed in the last sentence of our motion, the items that we need, and we said that this license is contingent upon receiving all those, that's still what we want. It's contingent upon receiving all those.
Yes, yeah.
If we want to, do we want to amend it and just add a date certain? Would that make everyone feel a little more comfortable? Yes, Counselor Gilman?
I would not be opposed to adding an amendment that further conditions, further conditions that these, that there are 30 days from September 11, 2019, to comply with the conditions. Because we need to set a finite time.
Yeah, that's what I'm suggesting.
So I would like, I would like to amend this. I move to amend.
Before you do, I just want to make sure that satisfies the concerns everyone has, which I think is what we're all saying, is that we just would like, the items that are already listed in the motion are the ones we need. Some of them are here, some of them aren't, okay. But if we say that there is a date certain, that they all have to be in, that puts it on the applicant to get those in by that date, or the license isn't valid. And so then we don't have to worry about the clerk. Yes, Counselor Cox.
But from what Joanne just said, the chief is not going to sign off on the license until those other documents are in. So that's, that's the key there. We don't need to make an amendment because the application's not satisfied until it's completely signed off. So it's up to the fire department to make sure that they have those documents in order for the applicant's sign off to be complete, for the license to be complete. Is that what I'm hearing?
Okay, so, all right. Under normal process, okay, the fire department signs off, and then they will put a condition on the application. There was no condition put on the application. When I brought this forward to the fire chief, he came back that they still hadn't filed the required documents from the first license that we issued, and that he was going to make sure that the applicant was going to comply and file the documents, okay? Last year, when they acquired it from National Fish.
See, that's the thing that I was trying to get out of the earlier hearing, is the original application was filed when they changed ownership, and the requirements from that original application still are not in compliance, but they're before us tonight to get a new application because their numbers changed. So they weren't in compliance with the first application because not all the documents came in. Is that not the case? Is the case? And now I'm really confused.
All right.
Chief, go ahead and shed some light on that. The original application was completed. There were no conditions for the fire department requiring an update of that paperwork. We expected that that would come in due course, because it's typically an annual update that we get. Almost every business kind of has a timeline of when they get those plans done and resubmit. The Tier 2 submissions are done on a routine basis through the feds, actually through the state to the feds. So we get that. When it comes back to us, when they submit them, when they're required, we get a copy through PDF. So their, their current license, their flammable storage license that they have in hand now, was done appropriately and prudently. We expected to get updates a little bit sooner than we did. We knew that Tier 2 would take a cycle to catch up, and we're at that point where it should have caught up, and now we're just pressing the issue to get all the paperwork done. But there's, the issue is they found more material and storage in a different manner than what it was originally listed. They're just trying to do the right thing to amend it. This is really, like I said, it's just more of a paper exercise than anything. The plant hasn't changed. We don't have any serious concerns. We just want to make sure that we're getting our paperwork, and we're requesting that you support us in that to make sure that it's required, and that's really it.
So are you putting a condition on this permit that, that they need to have those documents in within a certain amount of time?
That is correct. That's what we requested, within whatever amount of time the council is good with. It sounds like Nick is amenable to 30 days, which shouldn't be out of, you know, the realm of simple enough for them to get done.
Okay, so you are requesting that we do amendment for the 30 day, just so we're all covered with the documents that we need?
And I don't see any reason to hold up his licensing.
That's fine.
I mean, if you state that, yeah, you need to have it in with 30 days, he said he's going to get it done in 30 days. I think you can finish this and move on, and we'll follow up with him and get it done.
And so-
All right, that's good. Stop talking. We're just going to ruin it at this point.
Yes. So we just add an amendment to, the amendment is, the contingency is by-
I'm ready to amend it.
Go ahead and give it a try.
I would like to amend the motion-
Good luck.
-by adding further conditions that these are, that there is 30 days from September 11, 2019, to comply with the conditions. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. So on the motion, we have a motion to the main motion, and do we have a, it's just a simple vote? On the motion to the main motion, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. So backed out of the amended main motion, which has a contingent date in it now. Counselor Heck.
I'm going to support this.
Thank you.
This is a self-reported change. When you take over a company, I think there's a lot going on, and they found it, they brought it forth, and that's why we're here. In addition, whether it's an error or a spill that's small or catastrophic, if the insurance company is allowed to understand this and finds this out, then the insurance company are going to be off the hook for not only this facility, but abutting properties. Because there will be a claim of abutting properties against a catastrophic failure in this plant. So it's very clear to me that we want to support this motion tonight and put the wood to them in terms of getting the paperwork in for, in 30 days. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gilman.
So I will also be supporting this. P and D discussed the amendment to the license for inflammables with not only Nick Osgood, the partner, but also with Fire Chief Eric Smith and Adam DeBregard, Fire Inspector. The committee was informed that NSDJ only took over the assets of the former business, National Fish and Seafood, two months ago, and then learned that there was a discrepancy in the ammonia systems documentation. This modification is to remedy that situation, and I like 30 days that we've just added to that to make sure that there is compliance. So I hope that the rest of you consider supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor O'Hara, did you want to speak? Go ahead.
This is obviously an extremely serious issue. We've batted it back and forth, but I think our responsible person in the city, Chief Smith, has made it known that the plant is safe. He's comfortable with the plant and its operation. So with that, I will be supporting this.
Anybody else? Okay. Is this a simple majority, too? Good. Then all those in favor say aye. Aye. Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Madam Clerk, next order of business.
Next order of business is public hearing 2019-042 to amend Gloucester Court of Ordinances, Chapter 11, Section 11-10A, Special Events, Transient Vendors, Parades, by adding the following sentence. The committee shall include a member of the city council appointed by the city council president or another council designee.
Now, I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in favor of this amendment? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Are there any communications, Madam Clerk?
Yes, there was one that you all received from Bill Sanborn, the Chair of Special Events Advisory Committee, in which the CAC expressed support for the addition of a member of the city council as an ex officio capacity to CAC.
Thank you. Any counsel questions on this? Counselor Cox.
I'm just curious, if it's an ex officio, why do we feel like we need an appointment there anyway? We won't really have a say in the matter, and if anybody has any concerns as a city council at the public meeting, why wouldn't we just go to the public meeting?
Well, I'm not 100% expert on the rules of CAC, but I do know that they vote on applications. I think maybe, Madam Clerk, you could enlighten us on that process?
I'm sorry, this was your motion, so I just figured you would have some more background on your reasoning why you feel this is necessary.
Oh, okay. Well, then, that's a different question. This, this motion is, is a follow-up to another motion I made for a way to get public input into the special events approval process. And one way to do that is to put a member of the city council on the CAC committee, which is currently just, adminis-, just city staff. There is no elected official on the CAC. And so as representatives of the public, that would give the public a voice in the approval of city events, that's why.
But they don't not take public input. If there's a complaint about a certain issue, I mean, I've been to several of these meetings where I've seen public input actually happen. So, and as a city council, I've been to them to place public input or complaints or concerns about certain events that happened. I just, in ex officio matter, all we're doing there is basically sitting there and listening to the-
Right. So the ex officio was a suggestion by the building inspector. That is not what the motion would be, that the, the motion is that the representative of the city council would be as all the other members are, of the same authority and stature as the other members, not an ex officio. So the amendment, this motion would have to be amended to do what the building inspector wishes.
So your original motion was to place somebody in there with a say in the matter?
Yes. Yes, that is exactly right. To have a member of the city council have a voice in the approval of special events.
So I don't know that I'm comfortable having one city council voice an opinion for all of us.
Right.
That's, I'm just, I'm trying to figure out-
Just questions right now.
Just questions.
I understand, I'm trying to get to the heart of why the matter is-
I think we all have something to say when it comes to this.
So any other questions? Counselor Gilman?
A question to our city clerk through the chair.
Go ahead.
Joanne, it's a question. What is to prevent you from letting us know as counselors what is coming up in advance at one of your CAC meetings, if in the event any one of us wants to go and just sit in to listen?
I can send you a copy of the agenda. I mean, the mayor has requested now that all, she be CC'd on the upcoming events. So I can, when I post an agenda, I can add you as a CC to the agenda, and you would know what the, what events would be coming up.
A follow-up question. If, for example, something was coming up in Ward 4, and I wanted to go, would I be allowed to ask questions?
You may. It's up to the chair, but we usually try to keep public comment, especially if someone is disagreeing with the event. But if there's any concerns, you know, the chair would allow the comment. And then we would, as a committee, address the concern before approval, and ask the applicant what he would do to rectify the problem.
Other questions? Question, Counselor Heck.
Are there, I probably should know this, but are there certain events that are of certain size that come to the city council as a matter of course? Or is it everything decided completely by the events?
What comes to the standing committee, P and D, is road closures.
Road closures.
As for the size of the events, it doesn't go to city council. That's because the process has changed. All events before CAC would go to full city council to be approved, and then after they decided to do CAC committee.
Thank you.
Other questions? Then I will close the public hearing and ask for the committee report.
Ordinance and administration voted unanimously to recommend that the city council amend Gloucester Court of Ordinances, Chapter 11, Section 11-10, Special, Subsection A, Special Events, Transient Vendors, Parades, by adding the following sentence that the committee shall add, also include a member of the city council appointed by the city council president or council designee, and I so move.
Moved and seconded. Okay. So that's the motion, and, I mean, I'll start because it was my motion. So I'll just say that it, and this is just my opinion, so everyone can have their own opinion, that the approval of city events is something that somewhere along the line, the public should have a say in these events. And there are many events, as we all know, especially that come to P and D, that are small and have little or no impact on, on the life of the city, and there are some that are really big, that the city council doesn't have any input at all. They just happen. And the best example of that is the recent Riverfest. Now, Riverfest turned out to be a success, but the city council and the people who talked to us didn't have any input about the acceptance of the- to us didn't have any input about the acceptance of the Riverfest. The Riverfest was accepted as an event without any of the, without a lot of the public safety things being in place. We had to ask for that. It was a long time coming when we asked for it, and it was just for our information with no input from the City Council. So, I put forward the motion that somehow that we should have some input on city events. It's really, you know, up to the counselors as to how you feel about that. I feel a certain way, but my time is limited on this council, so it's really up to you guys. This is a vehicle to allow you to satisfy your constituents if you think that's necessary. Maybe you don't think it's necessary to have a voice in the city events, but this is one way to do it. So, that's what I have to say about that, and I will vote for it. Yes, Counsel LeBlanc?
Aye, 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 aye. I think that, you know, with the City Clerk distributing the agenda to the counselors, that we can attend these meetings and have a little bit of input, and also recommend that to the committee that, you know, whether we think it should come to council or not, being the Ward Counsel or whatever, but having a counselor as a designee or an ex officio or a voting member, you know, we saw last weekend where, or two weeks ago, where we had a lot of public input, and people, even though by right or whatever the process was supposed to be, you know, thorough, that people voted their hearts and were biased because of input. So, you get an event happening downtown or at Stagefort Park or on Good Harbor Beach or wherever this event may happen, the person that's designated to be part of this process may be biased because they have something, you know, an attachment to or something like that. I mean, we have qualified members on this board to do this, super qualified members. And for our job as the City Council is to make sure that we appoint these people that are qualified to this board to make these decisions. So, I think that with the City Clerk distributing the agenda, I think that's basically what we should do and follow up with the City Clerk on these matters. And I don't, I'm not agreeing to an ex officio. I don't think it's a good idea to have, you know, every little thing that comes through. We're appointed to do, you know, larger things up here at City Council rather than have special events come to us or candlelight vigil or a cookout or something like that. Let's leave our job description to vote special permits, major projects, and things like that, and we shouldn't be voting on the little things that come through.
Counsel Holmgren?
I agree with Counsel LeBlanc. Our City Council is certainly here for checks and balances, but we also need to let the city administration do its job, as we've seen from the last week. Too much political entanglement can have unintended consequences and can encumber progress. And I've asked Joanne for information on special events coming up. She's given it to me freely. We all have the right to do that as a body and as a city. And I just thought, right now, if we have one voting member from the City Council, do they represent the will of the whole council or their own political agenda? So, it's, I would really like it to stay the way it is. Thank you.
Counselor Nolan?
I can see some of the way it happened in the beginning. We did have a lot of issues around Stagefort Park the past few years. With the second day of the Waterfront Festival, the handling of the Riverfest, the park and enforcement and working with the administration changed a hundred percent from Saturday of the Waterfront Festival to Sunday. And them knowing the importance of enforcement in that area for the neighbors makes a difference. I also think that if we do have someone on the Special Events Committee, it may be a little bit of an odd situation. It's the only committee where people are actually appointed for a job and not as a volunteer, and I wouldn't want anybody feeling as though that they were working to try to please someone that may have something that isn't the full vow of the council. I do like the idea of Joanne getting us the information. The one thing that I think should change is that if a City Counselor comes to CAC to speak, I think that it should not be the will of the chairperson of whether they want to listen to him or not. I think that if a City Counselor has an issue and they go to CAC, they should be heard on the matter in front of them before the vote. But I'm comfortable with that, and I'm comfortable with the way things have been going since the second day of the Waterfront Festival. But the one thing that I did find weird is that I think if a City Council does show up to speak at CAC, I think that they should be allowed to speak and not at the will and pleasure of the chairperson.
Counsel Cox?
I have several opinions on this. First of all, City Council is a part-time job. The CAC meetings are held during the day. You would be maybe not appointing the best person or to the CAC if that was the case. It would be somebody that had the time in their schedule or could leave their work for a period of time. To accommodate us, they would have to hold the meetings in the evening, which is probably better for the general public that are trying to get to these permitting bodies, but not for our staff. I totally take umbrage with your opinion that we don't have a say in city events. As City Counselors, it's our duty to have a say in every public event, and it's our duty to listen to the public regardless of our own personal opinion of whatever event someone's complaining about. It is our duty and our responsibility to report those findings and those complaints or opinions, or compliments for that matter, onto the CAC Committee. I agree with Counsel Nolan. If a City Counselor has gone through those steps to privately have those discussions with whatever department head might be affected or the entire committee, but still feel that it's necessary to go to one of these meetings and continue to voice an opinion if they don't feel like they're being heard by the department head or the administration, then by God, we should be heard at this meeting. And I don't think I've ever been turned down. So, but I do agree with Counsel Nolan. It should not be at the whim of the chair. It should be just a matter of right. And I trust our department heads. I trust that they know what they're doing. I trust that they have the best interest of the city with permitting or not permitting these events. But I don't, I think adding another layer of red tape to this is crazy. I think we also have the opportunity to work with the administration, and if there's failure in any such event to the point where we need to feel like we need to pull it in front of this body, then I think it's going to be very clear to everybody that there is a failure if it needs to come to this body. And I think we should have an outlet to be able to handle appeals to a decision, whether it's a turn down or an approval, to the CAC Committee. But there should be some method for us, but appointing somebody in an ex officio or officio matter when this job, which we all know is not part-time, but it's treated as part-time, our meetings are in the evening, and to require one of us to have an opinion for eight of us, I just, I don't think, while we all get along for the most part, I certainly wouldn't want anybody speaking on my behalf in a public setting like that. So, I will not be supporting this.
Anyone else? Counselor Gilman?
I'm comfortable with how this is operating now. I think CAC does a really good job. I think they're thorough. I think they're detailed. I think the fact that the department heads are all part of the decision makes them, holds them accountable. So, I won't be supporting this, but I do like the idea of getting the agenda, seeing it, having the option of attending just to hear on something that's important and maybe asking a question or two. So, I think that's a great process improvement. But Joanne works for the City Council, and she's there, and she takes good notes, and she knows what's going on. And whenever I've had questions for Joanne, even before they come to City Council, for example, road closures, I'm always very comfortable with the answers that I get. So, I won't be supporting this, and I do also appreciate the work that the city staff does at these meetings. So, thank you.
Anybody else? Yes, Joanne, go ahead.
I do want to mention that when we hear concerns or complaints about an event that has been held, we call back the applicant, and we voice our concerns. And there are notes taken, that I already have a list for the next year on some events that I am going to bring up that they did not comply with. So, we do, in some circumstances, if we have a lot of complaints or when they come for approval again, what I hear back that they didn't comply with transient vendors or some sort of condition that they had, I have a file going for the next year's event for, on approval. And as for speaking, the chair usually lets everybody speak. There was only one time in which it was getting into a debate between the applicant and a concerned citizen, and, you know, the chair did stop that. So, but everyone does have a, you know, they can speak as long as not, you know, bringing down the event or anything.
Sure. Go ahead.
These are public meetings, so these agendas are posted as are all of the boards and commissions. So, I don't feel like it's Joanne's obligation to email us with an agenda. I think we have the obligation to pull the agenda like we would do with any board or commission that meets within the city. So, I mean, I don't, I am fully against adding one more thing to your to-do list. So.
Anyone else? It's interesting, when I proposed my other proposal, which was to have the City Council approve any events involving Stagefort Park and the Boulevard, and I had a conversation with the mayor about that, it was the mayor who suggested that that was, she was not going to be in favor of that, having the City Council vote on stuff like that. But she thinks that she thought that a member of the City Council on the CAC Committee was the appropriate way to do that, so. But I guess that she's not on the City Council anymore, so it doesn't matter what she says, right? I put this-
I do commend you for putting this forward. I mean, anything that should be, go forward for discussion. I absolutely do.
I put it forward because there was a, you know, the concern is, does the public have input into these matters that can turn into pretty serious matters? And if everyone is comfortable, if everyone is comfortable that that is in fact happening, the public does have input through whatever involvement each of us do, then I'm certainly fine with that, and I would make a motion to withdraw this proposal.
Motion to accept.
Great. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Thank you. Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Next order of business for council vote, City Council Order 2019-031, Gilman and LeBlanc, request City Council based on a traffic commission study, speed study, petition the Mass DOT to reduce the speed limit on Poplar Street from 30 miles per hour to 25 miles per hour.
Counselor Gilman?
So, Counsel LeBlanc and I initially put this on the table because we got an earful at the site meeting on Bretoni relative to the KPM Museum about cars speeding. And then, I had heard from several people on Poplar, on my side of Poplar Street, and so we asked for a speed study. And our speed study came back to being pretty comfortably at 29 miles an hour or less for 85% of the people. So, that did not show a need to reduce the speed limit from 30 to 25. However, more recently, we've learned that they're paving Poplar Street, and it is a walking route for all the O'Malley kids. It's also a walking route for Poplar Park, and we have a disabled child that lives on that street, and the cars were afraid might start to speed. So, what we decided to do was appropriately ask the department heads to weigh in, and we have three letters that we've received. One is from the Fire Chief, and he doesn't really feel it affects his jurisdiction because of response time. I think Chief Conley did a great job writing down, finding excellent statistics, and he didn't feel like he saw, I think there were 21 incidents, but he didn't feel any of them were related to speed. And his last words, though, however, was that if we were to move forward, he suggested that we would try to seek more community input. And then, the third person was our Public Works Department, Mike Hale, who's very aware of Safe Streets and all the grants that we have, and he said that he liked the idea. So, what Counsel LeBlanc and I chatted briefly today, and we thought maybe the right thing to do would be to put this off for another two weeks and see if we can get more opinions from some of the neighbors, and then be prepared to vote in two weeks unless you have anything else to add.
I do. I would like to withdraw this at the moment because I think the speed study is flawed because Poplar Street is so riddled with potholes at the moment that you can't speed down it. You can only go a certain speed. So, I think if we withdraw this, refer it back out to traffic when it's repaved, then we can get a better grasp on what the real speed limit is rather than have it come back in two weeks. Then we'll give us enough time to reach out to the community, you know, because under the, you know, what I was told is that all roads are everybody's, not just the people that live on there. But anyway.
I'm comfortable with that as the co-originator.
Then we can get a better understanding of the speed study rather than it just being, because I drove down it today, and you can only go so fast down that road, or you're going to, your vehicle's going to fall apart. So, I think we should withdraw this without prejudice.
You've got a second from me.
Through the chair. So, in Arizona, all residential streets are 25 miles an hour, period. If it's in a residential zone, it's 25 miles an hour. I am flabbergasted that the state doesn't, that we're doing this street by street by street. Like, is there, is there a possibility to petition the state for the entire city? If it's a residential zone, it is automatically 25 miles an hour instead of doing street by street by street? Because we seem to do a lot of these street studies.
I have, I have an order in right now for exactly that.
Okay.
And it's per the Mass General Law, which allows us to do that. And I'm presenting it to ONA. It's Counsel Holmgren and I.
Okay.
So, our job will be to put it on the table and let the ONA understand how many cities and towns in Massachusetts already have it. There, I think there's close to 100.
Okay. But I've also been told that if there's not a speed limit posted, it's 30. So, does that mean that we're going to have to install a bunch of 25 mile an hour signs? Or is this something that kind of takes that over? Like, if it's not posted, then it's 25?
Right. That'll be something to discuss at ONA.
Right. Well, I'm trying to figure out if that's the case. So, it's just a future question.
Madam Clerk, next order of business?
Is an update of the Tourism Commission by City Council Representative Counsel Ken Hect.
Counselor Hect. How did the season go?
Thank you.
How did the season go this year?
Oh, I think the season was marvelous. The Tourism Commission, I think, like some others, are struggling for representation. There's four members officially on the Tourism Commission. Jill Cahill's been working very hard. You've all seen the Facebook posts and such about the mayor trying to fill various slots on many commissions. on many commissions. So we really need one more person to have a quorum. So we've been able to discuss things, but we've not been able to vote. And the discussion items are redoing, redoing our charge, you know, what are our things that we want to do, sort of dividing up certain things that the DDC has been doing, and now there's, you know, Jill Cahill's group that's doing certain things. What is left specifically for the Tourism Commission to do and do well in a, in a zoomed-in scope? So we're going to narrow the scope, and we're going to come up with that as soon as we get a fifth person. But I think everyone's on board with what we want to do. We just, so if you have ideas, we brought on Jenna Miro, which has been a great addition as number four, and we need number five. So if you have any ideas, we'd love to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, last item.
Councillor's request to the mayor.
Councillor Holmgren, you want to start us off?
Yes, I just have a small announcement. This week, September 8th through 14th, is Direct Support Professionals Week. And direct support professionals, home health aides, nursing assistants, personal care attendants, and group home workers help the people that they support and their families to live meaningful, productive lives in their communities. They build close relationships with the people they serve, who rely on them for assistance with tasks such as eating, bathing, dressing, taking medications, overcoming mobility issues, and attending school, work, religious, and recreational activities. So please join me in thanking and observing direct support professionals during this week in honoring these workers' vital contributions.
Thank you. Councillor Memhard?
I'd just like to remind all of you that you're invited to join me and residents on Thursday, the 12th, at the Rocky Net Cultural Center. We're having a follow-up conversation about Ward 1 development issues relating to housing, and some of the issues that came up during our public hearing of 116 East Main Street, although we will not be talking about that specific project. It starts at 6:00 and go about 8:00.
Thank you. Councillor Nolan?
I just want to thank the council and the city for all the projects that are happening in Ward 5. Without the support of the full council and the administration, a lot of these projects wouldn't have happened. The pier is coming along wonderfully. The water projects on Englewood and Lake are moving extraordinarily fast. The designs are starting to come together for the Concord Street Bridge, the repair work on the Walker Street Bridge, the work coming forward on Woodman Street for a waterline after, I don't know how many years, without ever having a waterline in a public road. Everything's working well, and I want to thank everybody up here, as well as the administration, for the support, for making this happen.
Thank you, Sean.
Yes, thank you, Councillor Nolan. You took a leadership role on most of those things. Thank you. Councillor Cox?
The Phyllis A. is doing an art show down at the railways on the weekend of the 21st and the 22nd. They are still looking for artists to join in on the show. So if you would like, please feel free to send me an email on the information. I will also be posting this on my council page and my personal page. And the Fish Box Derby is coming up on the 29th. If you followed their posts on Facebook at all, they are looking for sponsors for certain categories. So if you are inclined to support the Fish Box Derby, please reach out to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor LeBlanc?
I might move toward 5, because it's so nice.
Okay, Councillor Hecht?
Not much, just one thing. I'm having my knee replaced on Monday, so if you want to stop by the house and see me all whacked out on drugs, you know, come on by.
Councillor Gilman?
Yeah, kudos to the mayor and all the folks that organized the Schooner Festival. It was second to none. The Friday night event was just a blast, and the boats were awesome. It's just so beautiful. Councillor Cox, your photography was lovely, and I think we all enjoyed the Schooner Festival. So I also wanted to just remind people that tomorrow morning is the 9/11 ceremony. I think it starts at about 10 of 10 at the Central Fire Department. Public is welcome to join us. And then there's, I think, a reception here at City Hall afterwards. It's a very solemn, but very moving event. And then finally, kudos to Public Works for just an incredible job in the Reynard Street and part of Cherry Street, Complete Streets work. It's just amazing. It's real, it's just, it's really beautiful, and the sidewalks are such a bonus. And, and they did a really good job communicating to the residents, and it's just, it's amazing. So to Mike Hale and his team, and the contractors that they chose, thank you. Administration, it really has been great. I'm very proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor O'Hara?
So, and I think I can speak on behalf of the council, but we want to thank the entire Gloucester Fire Department, Gloucester Police Department, more importantly, the Gloucester Coast Guard, or Coast Guard Station Gloucester, for the recent saving of the 15-year-old boy off a raised chasm. 13-year-old boy. Okay, stand corrected, 13-year-old boy. It was a tremendous feat of all parties involved. Also want to thank the 37 people who turned out at the Magnolia Library yesterday to donate a pint of blood. 37 pints were collected. Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll just mention that last night in this hall, the, the East Gloucester School Building Committee held a public hearing. The place was packed, including the upper level. Probably 40-plus people spoke. There was an awful lot of really good input from the citizens about the location and consolidating the schools and all that. The, I did want to commend the committee, the school building committee. It's, it's made up of some, a couple of principals, a couple of citizens, Department of Public Works, a really great group, and they've spent a lot of time working this. They did announce last night, Jonathan Pope, the superintendent, I mean, the chairman of the school committee, announced that at their meeting on Thursday, this Thursday at 5 o'clock, they will be voting to winnow down the current nine options that they're considering to four or three, some lesser amount. So the, they're focusing in on what, you know, they're going to ultimately propose. The city council doesn't really have a role in the choosing of this. We will ultimately have a role in the financing perhaps, but not in the choosing. But I did want to commend, I know some of us were there last night, that this committee has done a tremendous job in, in this very difficult, you know, process. So they're, they're getting there somewhere. So, and that's all I have to say. So a motion to adjourn? So moved. We're adjourned.